I would like to call to order this meeting of the Upper Providence Board of Supervisors. This is a regular meeting, Monday, December 13th. If everyone will rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I assume everybody's had a chance to review the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved. Okay, we have some ceremonies tonight. I'd like to thank you, Al, for six years of honorable service on this board. And I would say that you're leaving the township safer and better protected than the day you came on the board. It may not be said of all of us when we leave. And I want to thank you for personally reaching out to me when I was elected to help me start figuring out, you know, where the pieces go around here. So, in any way, in any event, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Carrigan.
Thanks, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely. Do you use that one?
Yeah. I'll try to be brief. I have actually two quick presentations here, if you don't mind. Upper Providence Township has consistently taken a proactive and responsible approach to the provision of emergency services to our rapidly growing community. This is due in no small part to the commitment and support of our elected officials and township administration, all of whom have consistently placed public safety as a high priority. The most recent steps in the evolution of our fire and EMS delivery model include the ongoing construction of a new fire station and an improved coverage model that will take, that will place a staffed ambulance and fire truck in this new station on a 24-hour basis once opened in the spring of 2022. We also recently completed an operational consolidation between the Township Department of Fire and Emergency Services and the Black Rock Volunteer Fire Company. Formerly DFES Station 93 and Black Rock Station 99, now we operate under one station number, 68. These advances in community public safety are due in large part to the perseverance envisioned by Supervisor Al Vagnosi, who during his tenure has relentlessly championed a modern public safety delivery model for this community. On behalf of our entire department, I want to thank Al for his support and efforts. And I can find no more fitting way to do so than to appoint him honorary chief 93 and present him with this helmet with our gratitude and respect. Would you like to come get your helmet? And you have to wear it for the rest of the meeting. If I could ask Assistant Chief Tom Demerling, firefighter William Clemmons, firefighter Ryan Colley, firefighter Kyle Lochner, and firefighter Stephen McCoy to come up. September 1st and 2nd, 2021, the remnants of Hurricane Ida impacted Upper Providence Township with unprecedented rainfall, causing record flooding of both the Skookel River and the Perkyomen Creek. As a result of the rapid rise of the waters, numerous residents were trapped in their homes. Over the course of several hours, crews utilized boats to access the trapped residents. At great peril to their own safety, crews navigated the swiftly moving water among debris and other obstacles to gain entry to the first and second floors of the homes to rescue the occupants and their pets. As victims were rescued, they were moved by boat to a launch area where they were then transported to shelter. The crews returned time and time again to rescue more residents. These rescues required precise coordination and accountability to ensure that no one was left behind. By the end of this event, 191 people and 42 pets were rescued from their homes. The life-saving efforts of our emergency personnel that answered the call on September 1st and 2nd, 2021, demonstrated a team effort under extreme conditions that distinguished themselves in their dedication to the calling of protecting life and property. Their heroic actions that night reflect the highest traditions of our emergency services community. The Upper Providence Township Supervisors, Department of Emergency Services, and residents of Upper Providence Township are forever indebted to that dedication. For that, I would like to present this unit citation to Chief Thomas Demerling, firefighters William Clemmons, Ryan Colley, Kyle Lochner, and Stephen McCoy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One last thing for everybody in attendance. I just want to introduce George Gilianno from Friendship Ambulance, who's in attendance tonight. George has been working with us to initiate the EMS service to the new fire station. So I thought it'd be nice for him to just stop by and say hi and see everybody in person. And also Sean Semels is here, our new emergency management director. Sean will start on January 3rd, 2022. So I just wanted to take two seconds and introduce them. And I don't know if you have any questions for them or not. I don't want to put them on the spot, but I know they have other, other things they've got to get going on and do, so.
Yeah, good to see you, George.
All right, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. And now we have one more presentation, and I believe the township manager is going to take care of that. This is not on our agenda, but.
Just not to belabor everything tonight, but I think if any of you have watched the changing of the guard video, you had a nice preview of when Chief Freeman took over the reins at the police department. And even though he's been chief for less than a year, he's been with the department for 30 years. And I wanted to congratulate him on 30 years of service, Chief of Police Mark Freeman, in recognition and sincere appreciation of your distinguished service, dedication, and leadership for the past 30 years. Thank you for your ongoing commitment and contribution to our success.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have one minute?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, tonight's my last night. I'd rather say this now. It's my last night as a supervisor. And, you know, I just feel very fulfilled with how our public safety services have developed during my tenure, certainly with the other board. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the only one here. But just how the fire department's developed from a volunteer system into a hybrid combination fire department. Our police department has gone, has improved significantly since 2015. It's an accredited police department. The quality of the staff is tremendous. Our chief of police, Mr. Mark, Chief Freeman, I've known him for a long time, tremendous asset to this community. Our ambulance service that we've, we're implementing here, led by the Royersford Fire Department and Chief George Gilianno, we've created a public safety system that is reliable, high-quality, and it's solving a problem that our community needs. As far as the fire department, we can't, we can't hope that a fire truck shows up in the middle of the night. We need to know that it's going to show up during the middle of the night. And we love the volunteers, but the way the world is today, we need a combination of our valuable volunteers and our paid staff. So I think this township has implemented a system that is cost-efficient, effective, and, and, and high-quality. And I think other towns are going to look at this, and they already are looking at what Upper Providence did and what we're doing here in the go-forward. I just, I just feel so fulfilled that I'm going to exit the board at this time, and this community is well on its way to continuing its great. It's, it's really the jewel of the county, and I really believe that. So thank you for everything that the employees do. The supervisors here do a great job. And I'll show up on the other side of the dais every once in a while, but it'll be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now's the time for public comment. I'll ask you to come forward to the lectern if you have a public comment. State your name and your street address, and please address your remarks to the board or members of this board. Thank you. Okay, I see no one coming forward. No public comment this evening. All right. Executive Session Report. An executive session was held December 1st to discuss a real estate matter. It was related to 929 Port Providence Road, and that will be on our agenda later this evening. Okay, approval of the bill list. If everyone's had a chance to review the bill list, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the bill list from October 14th, 2021, to November 8th, 2021, in the amount of $2,369,398.52.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the bill list for the amount of All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And we had a, quite a few meetings and workshops in the last couple of months. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven sets of minutes to approve. We can do this in one big motion if there are, if there are no amendments to those minutes. I reviewed them. I don't have any amendments. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of October 18th, October 27th, November 8th, November 15th, November 17th, December 1st, and December 8th.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve our meeting, our meeting minutes for regular workshop and, regular and workshop meetings from October 18th, October 27th, November 8th, November 15th, November 17th, December 1st, and December 8th of the year 2021. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. All right. And next, I will turn over the meeting to our township solicitor for a public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Bill. This is an application for a liquor license transfer. For those who have not been a part of one of these, we, we had a whole spate of them a few years ago, but we haven't had one in a little while. Under the state law, you can transfer a liquor license from another spot in the county, intra-county, so somewhere else in Montgomery County to a location here. And if one of the steps in that process of approval is a local hearing, and that's what this is. So there is a scheduled formal local hearing, and we have a court reporter here, to accept public comment. And if anybody did have public comment, they could seek to demonstrate that the relocation of the liquor license to the township would be contrary to the health, safety, and welfare. So the application is, was, has been filed by Attorney McHugh, and he's stepping up. And this is a license that's being moved from DeKalb Pike in Whitpain to 51 Town Center Drive. I'm sure Mr. McHugh will have additional details on that. And I will, the only item I'll make a part of the record for the township is the proof of publication for tonight's hearing. And then I note that Mr. McHugh prehanded up a packet of materials, five photographs, a site plan, a proposed menu, which is two items, and then a rendering. And we'll collectively admit those as applicants exhibit one. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McHugh. I'll just ask first, is there anybody in the audience who is here with questions or comments about the application? Let the record reflect that nobody has indicated that. So, Mr. McHugh?
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed McHugh, and I am the liquor license attorney for Harvest Collegeville LLC. Here with me tonight is Dave McGrogan. He is the owner, operator of Harvest Restaurants. There's other Harvest Restaurants in Pennsylvania, and also there's, there's one in New Jersey and one in Florida. He would like to open up a Harvest Restaurant here in Upper Providence Township, and that's why we're here tonight. And Mr. McGrogan entered into an agreement of sale to purchase a liquor license from the township of East Norland Township to bring it here into Upper Providence. And as was stated by the solicitor, it's a statutory requirement that we come before you to receive your municipality and ask your permission, our resolution that you received that this license into the township. What I'd like to do with the board's permission is proceed by way of just attorney presentation as opposed to the answer and question thing, and maybe open up questions for Mr. McGrogan and/or myself. But just give you a little bit of an idea about the restaurant and the concept itself. It's really going to be the same concept and the same operation as the other Harvest Restaurants currently in place. But I can give you a little bit of a, an understanding of what that is. So the Harvest Seasonal Grill and Wine Bar is a, provides a high-quality farm-fresh menu to its customers. It is farm-to-table, a concept. It offers over 50 wines by the glass, seasonal cocktails, and local breweries. They work hand-in-hand with the local breweries, farms, to, to, to provide the ingredients for their, for their dishes and their fares. My understanding, and Mr. McGrogan can kind of expand on this, is that every three months, Harvest Seasonal Grill and Wine Bar changes its menus depending on the season. And the, as you can, I did, Mr. Solicitor, did mention that there is an exhibit packet there, and you'll see by the site plan, the way that the premises would be laid out, where the kitchen's located, where the seating area would be located. There will be outside seating available if approved. And, you know, obviously, that would be seasonal. In the warmer months, those, those areas would be open and available to the public. The, as you can see by the rendering, the interior, excuse me, the interior will have a European motif, a similar design to the other Harvest Restaurants. The anticipated food versus alcoholic beverage kind of percentage division will be 75-25, and that's based on the other Harvest Restaurants currently in place and in operation in Pennsylvania. The proposed hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. during the week, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 10:00 p., 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday. As you can see from the photographs, there will be a bar inside the premises. There will be food service at the bar that will be a food, a full, a full-service bar area. The takeout food will be approximately 5% to 8% of takeout. There's not much takeout beer. There was, I think, during the pandemic at some of the other Harvest Restaurants, there was some takeout drinks, and, but most, most of that was, was food. But it's, it's, they don't rely on the takeout. It's, it's mostly sit-down. There will be no smoking inside the premises. Family-oriented restaurant available for patrons of all ages. It will employ approximately 50 to 75 employees, both part-time and full-time. As is the case with all Harvest Restaurants, the, the, the staff will be required to have RAMP training for all persons serving alcoholic beverages, and the premises itself will be required to be RAMP certified. RAMP is an acronym for Responsible Alcohol Management Programs. It's a, it's a program offered by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and it provides the education for the servers to understand the proper and lawful way to dispense alcohol. So I, I, I believe that Mr. Solicitor addressed the advertisement. With that, I'd like to introduce to the board Mr. McGrogan, and just have him come up and at least introduce himself. He's been in the hospitality industry pretty much all his life, and.
Why don't we have him sworn and attest to your summary, make it a part of the record?
And then maybe I'll just ask him whether he agrees with my remark.
Right.
Yes, I do. Sure, it's William David McGrogan, M-A-G-R-O-G-A-N.
So, Mr. McGrogan, you heard my presentation today?
Yes.
And would you agree with the facts as, as I presented them tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can give you a little background on the site, it's the Champ Space at Providence Town Center. So I think a lot of people are familiar that that's where we're going. So the objective originally was to just transfer the license that was existing in the Champ Space, but they've decided to sell it somewhere else to a higher bidder, somewhere outside of the market, I guess, or out, outside of the town center. So we're really refilling an existing restaurant that had a liquor license with ours. And unlike Champs, our restaurant is an upscale polished restaurant. Our dinner check average is about $45. Lunch check average is about $22 per person. So the menu does change every season. So the entire menu is redone every season. Our major purveyors, Lancaster Farm Fresh Co-op, that's 1,500 organic farms at Lancaster, and then several other local farms and local businesses. It's, as, as Mr. McHugh said, it really is about 75% food, 25% alcohol. That alcohol is normally drank with a meal. It's, it's not a place where people are going to hang out and watch an Eagles game or hang out and just drink at a bar without food. It's not that kind of establishment. The, the nearest Harvest here would be in North Wales, the Shops at English Village, which are actually moving that one across the street in the next month or so. Well, next, within, getting permits for it. But, and then Glen Mills is our original Harvest, which is at 202 at the Glen Eagle Shopping Center. And that, that store's been in existence for 11 years with, you know, no issues. Normally, by nine o'clock, we're pretty much done and wrapped up. As you can, you've been through the town center, there's not much happening there after nine o'clock at night, and we don't expect to have anything else happen as well, so. But we are, Harvest has been around for about 11 years. The Collegeville location will get a complete refresh. We've actually hired a bunch of designers, and we're refreshing the brand, sort of Harvest 2.0, so Collegeville will get the brand-new Harvest, so, the new version.
Just to clarify, the proposed approval resolution refers to the license coming from Newcastle Township, which I think that's a typo. But then during your presentation, and the letter says it's in Whit, coming from Whitpain, and there was a reference to East Norton, I think it's from Whitpain, but let's get that nailed down.
So I believe it's.
If you tell me that, if you tell us the establishment, we'll probably know whether it's.
Yes, so it's 148 West Germantown Pike in East Norton, Norton, PA.
Okay.
So I can give you, the license number is R-19441. The lid number for that, which is the license identification number for that license, is 81162. The name of the licensee is Izzy of East Norton LLC.
Okay, well, the, the approval resolution, maybe we'll just clean that up before we sign it.
I'm sorry about that.
It has the right, it has the right number. It just has the wrong reference.
Sorry about that.
And then the letter referenced East, referenced Whitpain, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, that's no problem. Any other questions or comments?
So the diagram, you're, you're in, are you there in the facility now?
Are we in the facility now? No, we're going to be submitting for permit.
All right, so does this have to go through any, Joe, does it have to get any approvals? Because you want to do outside seating.
Yeah, well, well.
This is, this is in no way permits. This is only limited to the liquor license transfer, yes.
So.
And that's the, that's just our rendering concept for the space. So, and we're using the existing Champs patio, and we're hoping to put a little patio on the other side, because all the walls on the side will be able to open. We've learned that with COVID, that you need to have some opening windows. So we're hoping on the other side next to Panera that we can put some tables there as well.
Yeah, I don't think the, well, you'll figure it out. Sidewalks are not too good there, but that has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, we have, we have enough room for the sidewalk and egress.
Do you know where the other liquor license is going from Champs?
So I believe, because I did look into, there's two licenses in safekeeping in Upper Providence. The one license was not available for sale. The other license is the Champs license. I believe that's for consideration to be transferred outside the township. I'm not involved in that transaction. The only reason I know is that when I contacted Champs, there was a firm in Pittsburgh that represented them, and they indicated that it's not available for sale. It's being negotiated. But I don't know if that sale is actually being, if it was finalized or anything of that nature.
The Champs group also owns Fox and Hound and several other, they're a California-based restaurant company. So they told us that they were looking for a new location for a Champs, probably closer to King of Russia, but that's just what they told us.
Where they closed one.
Yeah, they closed one.
Yes, I know. They wanted to stay. The landlord helped negotiate this transaction, so I also think that's one of the reasons why they weren't.
Nice.
Yeah.
And then local farms, I know you mentioned Lancaster for most of it. What other local farms? I'm just curious, because of course they want the local farmers here.
Yep, so what'll, what'll happen is our, our executive chef, each restaurant has their own executive chef, and they're allowed to work with any local farm. So the menu that we provided here is our actual menu for the fall right now. And in this one, I left my glasses in the car, of course. In this one, we're working with Farms in Thornton, Coatesville, and Lancaster, Doylestown. So this menu is most likely from our Glen Mills store. So as an example, we work with, can't remember the name of the Penny Pack Farms up in North Wales. And they supply our North Wales restaurant, but none of the other restaurants. They just don't have the capacity, so. And out in Newtown, Bucks County, our chef works with several farms there. But those farmers are going to deliver all the way out to Lancaster, as an example. So we, basically, when we go to open, we make contact with the local honey purveyors, all the local farms that do certain things, local pasta makers and things like that as well.
I don't have any, I don't have any real issues with this transfer, but I just caution the board that we should take, we should take a look at how many liquor licenses we allow into the township. I would hate to saturate the township and, so that there's enough business for everybody. It's like putting, you know, 20 or 30 repair shops in the same block of the township. It's just like, I know when I came into the township, there were like only four liquor licenses. I think there's probably 15 or something like that. We just, we should just keep an eye on that, that's all.
The liquor licenses, under the state law, are in relation to your population, but those numbers are. numbers are exceeded in most places, and one of the exceptions to the general rule is an inter-county transfer, because they, instead of going to each town, they pulled back and looked at county to county. And so, if it's staying within the county, that county's numbers aren't changing, so they're, they're allowed to if they, it's not, can't be directly controlled unless it was contrary to health, safety, and welfare.
Well, they used to have, they used to have a rule of thumb that they allowed a liquor license for every three thousand people. If that's, if that's something that you want to gauge things by, you know, we've already exceeded that. And I just, I just caught, all I'm, I have no issue with you, and I have no issue with transferring this license. I just want you to know that upfront. But I just caution the board that we should keep an eye on how many licenses that we do allow into the township, that's all.
Sounds like it's canceling one out, but one's gone.
Yeah, and it would, and the optimal thing for them to be would be to buy a liquor license that's in the municipality. Then they have to pay more money to transfer from that. They have to put a dog and pony show on at the other municipality and then bring it over here, and it costs them more money to bring one in from someplace else. But again, I have no issues with this.
Joe, when they get ready to reuse the one that was at Champs, because it's, even if they used it in the township, it'd be a different location, so it would come before this board anyway, right?
Well, if it's subject to a transfer somewhere else in the county, his indication was that they're not going to keep it in the township, so some other local township will be holding one of these hearings for that license.
Right, but I mean, if, let's just say they wanted to reuse it here, we would have, we would come before us, right?
Um, gosh, I probably had fifty of these, and I don't think I've had one that stayed within the municipality.
So, the answer to that would be no. They would not have to come before the township board of supervisors if it stayed within the municipality.
Okay.
But to, but to answer Mr. Pearson's question, so that standard still applies. It's one to every three thousand inhabitants. That's, that's the limitation on, you know, how many liquor licenses can be in the municipality. Every municipality in Pennsylvania is over quota, maybe the exception of like Potter County, there's, there's like a municipality like Potter County, but every other municipality in, in the Commonwealth is over quota. So, what they did in two thousand and one is they opened it up to the counties, because the counties really dictate the price of the license. So, for Montgomery County, it's somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, regardless of municipality, the buyer is paying that, that, you know, that purchase price. And so, I agree with the concept that most of the time it cancels, you know, you're moving from municipality to municipality within the county, and, you know, rarely do you get a situation where you're saturating one municipality and not, you know, because there's a limited number of liquor licenses with, when you think about it, within that, within that county.
Well...
But I understand your concern, though, yeah.
Yeah, and the state always changes its mind here and there. Well, we're not, we're not issuing any new liquor licenses, and then all of a sudden, they take the ones that they have in, in escrow, and then they auction them off, and the next thing you know, we've got another, you know, a whole bunch of other license out there. Again, I have no issue with this. It's, it's just, you know, I just caution the board, how many liquor licenses do you want to have? Plus the fact, you know, we're talking about a regular liquor license here and not a brew license and whatever else, and the next thing you know, you've got a dozen of those things, and you've got a dozen liquor licenses, and, you know, that's, that's all that I'm saying.
That's true.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? And did any of the presentation generate any questions from anyone here in the audience who did not previously indicate a desire to comment? Record will indicate no. Okay, without there being anybody presenting anything contrary to health, safety, and welfare, they're entitled to approval of the resolution as a matter of law, and I would ask you to call that for a vote.
Okay, what's the number on this?
The resolution number, the...
Or can I refer to this without reading the entire thing, or do I need to read it into the record?
You don't have to read it into the record.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll ask...
Two, okay. It's number, it's twenty, it's twenty eleven sixty-two.
Twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yes.
No, twenty eleven. Time warp, yeah, twenty twenty-one.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two related to transferring in of a liquor license for the new Harvest Restaurant.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two related to the transfer of a liquor license into the township. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Your menu looks scrumptious, by the way.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, all right, old business, and it's not really old, but it's our brand-new budget. We're going to consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-six, approving the twenty twenty-two capital and operating budget. This budget does contain a tax increase, a property tax levy increase on the safety levy that was levied, I think, four years ago, I want to say. Before that, we had zero. And this is really the completion of six or seven years' worth of work, as this board, even before I was on it, was studying the public safety service in the township, both fire and police. And I also include in that some public works, because public works and road maintenance also is a public safety issue. And so, that's, that's where we are today. And so, I'll entertain any comments or questions from members of the board.
Tim, were you going to present anything?
I was just going to show a few slides.
Go ahead, Tim.
If you'd like to just, very high-level slides on our budget pie. Our twenty twenty-two budget pie is about thirty-nine point two million, and that's divided among three pies. One slice is our general fund at twenty-two point seven million. Our sewer fund is at three point eight, and our capital funds are just shy of thirteen, thirteen million dollars. I'd like to talk a little bit, just real quick, on the general fund. The revenues are broken down among various categories. I just wanted to point out some of the significant variance is our public safety levy, which we are increasing based on the conversion to a twelve-hour to a twenty-four-hour fire service, and also some increases in our EMS appropriation and police. Our EIT, we're projecting a little bit more of an increase, and you'll, grants and shared revenue, you'll see a little higher than usual revenue. That represents the first installment of our COVID relief monies. Next slide, please. As far as the general fund expenditures, we have our major categories of township administration, which includes board of supervisors, administration and finance, our elected tax collector, and legal services, pool building expenses, police protection at six point six million, our emergency services at four point one, planning and zoning at seven twenty, and public works at three point four. Moving on down to transfers out, those are, those are our major transfers out, about a little over three million dollars of that will be going to our capital account to fund some of our major infrastructure projects that we have on store. Our mill levy breakdown is broken down among three categories, police, fire, and EMS. You'll see that the twenty twenty-two levy is going up about twenty basis points for police, about point nine seven five basis points for fire, and about point one two five basis points for EMS, all public safety-related. Next item. I just want to give you an idea on our regional levy rankings. We still rank number six out of our six regional towns that border us, and, and we're just slightly, slightly behind Limerick. Next, the next piece of the budget pies are sewer fund, and that's, we have about three point eight million dollars in revenues among tapping fees and sewer use charges and EDU charges. And our expenditures, next slide, please, is also, it's balanced at three point eight three seven, with our major payment going to the lower Perkium and Valley Regional Sewer Authority. I understand there is no rate increase this year, and we also have minor assessments to the general fund and public works, and a transfer out of the revenue fund to capital to fund our capital budget portion. As far as our capital budget breakdown, we have about eight cost centers, eight funding sources. We have a new one that will be funded next year. We are implementing an MS four stormwater fee, which is a federal mandate as part of, coming down from the EPA. We initially had thought about putting some ARPA money into that fund to fund stormwater projects. We removed all reference to that into the land bank, and that'll be, have some money in it next year. But our major categories are broken down by our capital assessments to our general fund, our capital expenditure fund at about one point seven, state liquid fuels, our sewer capital fund. The four point two million in our capital finance proceeds takes up the, most of the remaining bond monies from our twenty twenty-two, twenty bond, which is for the completion of the central emergency services facility, which I think Chief Carrigan announced is ahead of schedule. We're hoping for a substantial completion in February, early entry, hopefully sometime in March. Park and Open Space Fund, we have about one point two three eight million, and grants and donations, we're just shy of a million. Next item, please. Uh, that was it. Try to keep it high level.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, and I was just going to say, too, I was just thinking about the last twenty months or so of the pandemic, you know, our budget's been under pressure, primarily because our EIT did not see the growth that was originally projected for it. We were fortunate in that our earned income tax stayed flat and didn't decrease in that period, but we're hoping to see that grow, and one of the pressures has been on public works and parks and recreation, and now those pressures will be alleviated by fully funding the police and fire protection that we need. Again, I'll ask for any comments from the board.
Yeah, if I could, it just shows the resiliency of this community. For years, the town, we didn't have a tax until twenty seventeen, and how we survived without it, I have no idea. Burned through a lot of savings during that period of time, so we implemented a tax in twenty seventeen, and now increasing it now. Again, it's predominantly for, for public safety, and it's, it's a, it's a service that we all need, and we've looked at this budget. We have, thank all the department heads, by the way, I didn't forget the public works, the park and rec, and Richard, you're just Richard. But you guys do a great job. Parking rec, our parks are doing a great job and looking much better than they've ever looked. Signage is terrific. Tom, I don't have, I can't say enough about your team, the unsung heroes of the whole community, the folks who wear the badge and the uniforms, we know who they are, but your team and what you guys do every day means a lot, and they've worked on their budgets. There's, there's really, there's no fluff in them. Richard's done a really good job with his pen and his X-acto knife to cut things out of the budget, and Tim, everybody's done a great job. There's the, what we're spending money on, our increase this year is what this community really needs. When we talked about increasing the tax, it's because what the community needs to thrive. Our job is to make sure we have the services and our home values remain high. With, with high values of our homes, it, it helps this community thrive. You don't see very many vacant businesses in this town. You leave our borders, you do, but in this town, there's not much vacant, so it just goes to show you why, like I said earlier, this is the jewel of the county, and I really believe that. So, congratulations to everybody here, everybody on this board, and the staff has done a great job.
That's perfect. I do agree, everybody worked together on this one, and I do want to say, we live in an enviable township. It's enviable because it's first-class. It's first-class because our township administration's top-notch. It's first-class because our roads are kept up to, you know, A, A roads, our snow plowing, our police department, our EMT, our trails, our park and rec. And to maintain that, we need to pay for it and keep it at that A level, and we went around and around about this tax rate, and ultimately, I wish you can keep it from five years ago, but everything increases and people get increases in their pay, and we want to keep those amenities at that A level. So, that's why we all worked together and figured this out, and thank you all, your department heads, and Richard, thank you very much. Thank you, Tim, and it was quite a process.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-six, approving the twenty twenty-two operating and capital budget.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-six, approving the twenty twenty-two capital and operating budget for the township. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next order of business is the streetlight procurement program, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Fuller, I'm with Keystone Lighting Solutions, and I'm going to present to you a feasibility study for your consideration and talk about the decision for you to move on to the design phase of this program that we're going to talk about. So, is there a, hmm, there we go. Nope. Did I just advance the other?
I'll do it, just tell me what's...
Oh, okay, we can go on to the next slide. So, the program we're going to talk about is the Regional Streetlight Procurement Program, and this was developed by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission over five years ago. We're actually into the third round of this program, and you are a participant in the first phase of the third round, the feasibility phase. So, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the program, the feasibility phase, how that fits into the whole process, and then we'll talk about your specifics of the feasibility study that we put together for you. The one thing I want to point out is tonight, you are not making any decisions on a project or specifications or options that I may highlight for you. All you're deciding upon is whether you want to move on to the design phase of the project, okay? So, we can go on to the next slide. So, why do you even want to look at LED upgrades? Well, first of all, LED lighting is the standard lighting technology that is employed in any new construction project at this point. It really has been employed for, in outdoor lighting for ten to fifteen years. You just happen, like many municipalities, to have very old technology in your street lighting system, and our program is there specifically to help municipalities like yours upgrade those to the newest technology. When you do that upgrade, you're going to get significant energy cost savings through your PICO bills, you're going to reduce your maintenance costs associated with your lighting system, and you're also going to improve the lighting performance. LEDs are more controllable, we can put the light where it needs to be, for example, on roadways primarily. We also can control lights from going where they shouldn't go, onto, possibly onto private property, if that's the case. And the LEDs are also controllable, unlike the older technologies, so we can do things like dimming of light fixtures that you typically were not able to do previously. You can go on to the next slide. The one nice thing about this project, unlike many projects that you have to do, is this is a project that has a return on investment, so there are savings associated with the project that are going to, over time, pay for the project itself and then continue on, and those savings can then be applied to other uses within the township. So, DVRPC put this program together as a turnkey solution. They recognized that there were many municipalities that didn't have capabilities, or maybe they had the capabilities but wanted to benefit from a, a pooled effort of many municipalities coming together so we could better negotiate equipment costs and labor or installation costs, and we also provide financing through the project. We provide technical expertise. So, my firm was competitively selected by DVRPC to provide the design services. We did the feasibility also. We stay on and do the project management all the way through post-construction, making sure you get all the rebates from PICO that you're supposed to get. All the bills are updated sufficiently, so you get the savings that we indicate that you should get. So, everything is done for you as part of a turnkey process. I mentioned that we're in the third round of the program. In round one, we had over thirty-five municipalities participate, and these are in the four counties around Philadelphia is the participant range there. and these are in the four counties around Philadelphia is the participant range there. We had over 25,000 streetlights were upgraded in that round, over 5,500 traffic signal lights. And after the projects were paid for over 20 years, they're going to generate $15.3 million in additional in net savings beyond the project cost. This is also a very green and sustainable solution. You can see in round one that we, those municipalities are going to save over 10.6 million kilowatt hours, 5,500 metric tons of CO2, and that's on an annual basis. Round two, which we are nearing completion of round two with construction, we had 26 municipalities representing another 15,000 streetlights and some traffic signal upgrades. And so we've now touched over 60 municipalities. The savings in round two are going to be similar to round one, and generally, it's been a very successful regional program over the last five years. We can go on to the next slide. One thing I do want to mention is when we look at your project, it's of the size that you might have to do your own, if you're going alone, you'd be doing your own procurement effort for competitive requirements. In this case, you don't have to do that. DVRPC did the procurement, and you are able to piggyback off of DVRPC's effort via Chapter 19 of the Pennsylvania Procurement Act. So we can go on to the next slide. So we'll talk a little bit about your feasibility study and where it fits in. So we're in the feasibility phase, the end of it. And basically, this is a data-driven analysis. We didn't do any audits, and the analysis was pretty straightforward. And we really just used information that was available from PICO. And then also, Tom gave us a lot of additional supplemental information that helped us clarify what you have currently in your lighting system. So that's the basis of what we did. This was no charge to you. DVRPC is funding this. And simply, the goal is for you to see the opportunity associated with the upgrade, so you can decide if you want to move on to Phase Two. Phase Two is the design phase, and that would go on from January through about May. We'd be coming back to you at the end of that phase with another opportunity to decide if you want to continue on, which would be continuing on to construction. And I'll talk a little bit more about Phase Two a little bit later. We can go on to the next slide. We did create a much more detailed, approximately 40-page feasibility study. What I have in the presentation is basically summarizing all the important points from that study, but we did provide you with this feasibility study. We can go on to the next slide. So here's what's in the feasibility study. Based on the data that we had available to us, we believe you have 172 existing Cobra head fixtures. These are kind of your utilitarian roadway lighting fixtures. And what we would be doing, or what we're assuming in the feasibility, and then we would further explore in the design phase and finalize the design for, is we would upgrade all of those to a new LED fixture head. So we keep the arm, the wiring. Really, PICO owns the poles at this point, so, and most of these are on PICO poles. But we just replace the head, and these are different wattages. And in the second phase, we actually will do a detailed design based on roadway classifications to make sure that you have the right wattages and illumination on the different types of roadways. So less in the neighborhoods, more on the major and collector roads. So we can go on to the next slide. You also have a very large quantity of residential, what we call decorative, four-sided colonial fixtures. We believe that you, with the information we were able to get, 248 of these fixtures, we once again would just take off the head, and we'd replace it with a new LED head, a one-for-one replacement is what's assumed in the feasibility study. There also are two control options that we'll show you in the financials. We show you a base upgrade, which is without any advanced controls, so it just has a photocell control, turning lights on at dusk and dawn, on and off. You can also have a manual control, which actually basically has a dimmer inside the fixture. It's not accessible to anybody unless you go up to the fixture 20 feet in the air, but it does allow you future flexibility if you ever need to increase or decrease illumination levels based on some specific need for a specific location. It's a very low-cost adder to the fixture, but you're rarely going to use it, but it is a low cost, so a lot of municipalities like to have this future flexibility. A more advanced system is to have a network control system where all of the fixtures are connected to a network that can be controlled basically from a laptop or a tablet. Everything ultimately gets up to the cloud. That's, there's a central management system up in the cloud. And the primary reason that municipalities look at this system is for two reasons. Number one is the proactive reporting of the system to let you know when you have outages, so you don't have to wait for residents to call you or to not call you. And you may have an unsafe condition if a street light is out for a very long period of time. This would give you a report every day that basically says, here's what's out, and you could take action on that. There's many other reports that you get from it. It is a really controllable system. You can also do dimming strategies with it. You can do all sorts of things that would save you additional energy, but the primary issue is getting that reporting. And then the other reason that a lot of municipalities look at this is PICO started offering a new tariff that is a lower cost tariff than what you're currently on, and that would allow you to save additional money. And I'll show you those additional savings when I look at the different, show you the different options here for the project. We can go on to the next slide, and the next slide. I did want to mention, unlike, this slide's a little funny how it's on there, really, it's not aligned, but I'll tell you the key point of the slide here is basically, usually during the feasibility study, we, what PICO believes you have is the number of fixtures, which in your case is 398. Typically, that's what the feasibility says is what we're upgrading. Tom had additional information, and it's good to highlight it at this point, but we actually found another 36 fixtures above and beyond what PICO believes that you have. So we, our feasibility study compared what PICO thinks you have, and when we did our upgrade analysis and what we showed you the future lighting system would be, we included those additional fixtures. So in some ways, it actually hurt our savings in the project some, but it's accurate. And all your streetlights are un-metered, and it's, PICO expects a self-reporting of your inventory. So the fact that you do have those additional fixtures, they would need, even if we didn't do the project, you'd want to report those, that you have those additional fixtures, correct the inventory, and move forward with that. This is not an uncommon situation. It's just probably a little unique that we found it during the feasibility phase, and that's only because Tom had such good information to provide us. But when we look at the financials, I will point out, it probably hurt our paybacks by about two years by having to include these additional fixtures. But fortunately, the benefits of the LED give a great deal of additional savings well beyond that little correction factor that we had to factor in because of these additional fixtures we found. We can go on to the next slide. So here's what your project looks like. The Cobra heads are always a very good payback project. They're cheaper. They're just, you know, a much larger scale manufactured product, cheaper, more cost-effective product. So what you see is that the energy cost savings and the maintenance savings associated with the, these upgrades on the Cobra heads, you generate just shy of $5,000 per year in additional operating cost savings. The total net project cost to upgrade those, those types of fixtures is about $46,000. Now, that's net of a PICO rebate, so I'm factoring in that you are getting a rebate from PICO for this. And the next slide, I'll show you in more detail. So it's about a nine-and-a-half-year payback, which is very typical for our program for Cobra heads. And, and of those 30, I don't have off the top of my head, but a portion of the additional fixtures we found, some were Cobra heads and some were decorative. So they were kind of split between the two categories. If you did, we do offer financing. We have a very super conservative financing assumption in here, which means we have a high interest rate assumed. Probably would be much lower. But we do show you that if you were to finance with these conservative estimates, it would be another, well, the project costs would go up to 52,000 net of the rebate, and so now you're at about a 10-year payback. So the decorative, I actually think there's opportunities to improve this further. None of, all of our costs are established and set, but I am working with the manufacturer. They have a new generation of this product that comes out. We may be able to lower wattages, which would create additional energy savings, or we may be able to lower costs. But it currently is generating good savings, $5,600 per year, but it's a much more expensive portion of the project to implement. Again, you're not deciding on whether this scope would be in or out at this point. We're just deciding, do we want to move on to the design phase? But we at least want to show you what we assess the returns would look like at this point. So that's actually a 24-year payback, 27 if you include financing. The way most municipalities look at it is if they have an attractive Cobra head payback and maybe a less attractive decorative, they combine them because their goal is to really get the whole township upgraded and to get a fresh, across-the-board upgrade to the entire exterior lighting system. And so when you do that, when you combine those two, you have our base upgrade, so now we have over $10,000 in operating cost savings. The combined net project cost would be 182,000. That's a 17-year payback and 19 years if you did the financing. And then we talked about the controls. We also priced out two alternate options. Again, this gets figured out in Phase Two, what you really want to do. But the base upgrade, you get about the same savings if you add in the manual controls, and that's because I'm not really changing the level of illumination here. And so the wattages are very similar, given the same savings. But you'll notice that the, the net project cost went down, but we added in the cost of the controls. The reason being, which I can show you on the next slide, is that the PICO rebates go up significantly when you actually have a fixture that is a higher wattage fixture, which I do have with the manual controls, and then I dim it down to the level that I want. But all PICO cares about is what's the wattage of that fixture that I've installed. So they give you more rebate dollars for that. So the net is actually, it's almost like they're paying you to do the manual controls through the rebates, but the net project cost is less, and now you're down to a 16-year payback, 18 with the financing. Then if you do the base upgrade with the network controls, first thing I want to point out is your savings jump considerably from 10,000 a year to 14,000 a year, and that's because of that tariff change that I mentioned earlier. So there's additional savings because it's considered a smart lighting system at that point. And by the way, I will mention, and I don't want to overstate it, but that advanced, the network control system, it's not priced in, but you can add to it to start to add in some smart city capabilities, like sensors and other items like that, that some municipalities are looking at a little bit more over time. So that's another benefit, is you can build upon this system. But it does have a much higher cost associated with it because the network control is a pretty sophisticated control system. So now you jump up to 244,000. But because of the additional savings, you're really at the same payback that you were with the base upgrade, but it's a more costly solution. So we can go on to the next slide. I'm not going to go through all this. I'll just point out that this column over here, which you actually can barely read from here, you can see with the base upgrade, we're sitting at, I'm actually going to look off my sheet so I can see it. You're sitting at a $24,000 rebate from PICO, and here it jumps up to 44,000 when you go to the manual control system, and it's similar for the network control system. Okay? So those offset some of the costs, the increase in equipment costs that you have over here. Okay? This is just a further breakdown of the previous summary slide that I showed you. So we also show these in cash flows. I will say that once again, we used a very conservative 3.5%, and we did a five-year term. And the concept is that all we're trying to show here is that if you, if you finance things, you can have your savings offset a portion of your project cost. So the requirement for capital in any given year is less than if you were to just do the full expenditure all at once. Again, we're not looking for anybody to decide on whether they want to finance or not at this point. That would be a Phase Two discussion. We're just trying to show you how it would look. When I come back, if you were to proceed on to Phase Two, the feasibility study, as it looks in these types of charts, is almost exactly what my final project specification package is going to look like. It's going to give you all the same analysis, and then we'll have had more further detailed discussions about what you're interested in, your specific requirements, and some of these would, all of these cash flows and financials would reflect those more detailed discussions from the design phase. We can go on to the next slide. I did put up a 10-year version of this also. We're still trying to gauge from the feasibility participants who would want financing. And so one financing option we have is that we'd like to do, in round two, we did what we call the County Conduit Loan, where actually the county took out financing from Delval, and they in turn gave the municipality and township a subject-to-appreciation loan. That's a much lower cost model than what we, than what we showed in the five-year term, which might be more of a private loan placement. And so we ran it at 10 years. Oh, I'm sorry. We ran it at 10 years and at this lower one-and-a-half percent, because these rates are actually closer to 1% right now if we were to do that County Conduit Loan. Okay? So this is the cash flow for that. And then I'm not going to go through and detail the other cash flows, but this is five-year for the manual controls. Can go on to the next slide. 10-year at the lower rate for the manual controls. Then we have the last two or the five-year for the network controls, and the 10-year at a lower rate for the network controls. Again, these will improve and get tight and change as a result of Phase Two work. So let's talk just briefly, and I'm just about wrapped up here. In Phase Two, here's what you get in Phase Two. Number one, you get an investment-grade audit. This is a GIS-based audit. We're going to identify every fixture location so we can confirm, you know, the difference between what PICO has and some of the additional information that Tom had. We're going to have an inventory of all your lighting system, and we'll know exactly what you have. Even if you did not proceed to construction, when you look at the Phase Two costs, many municipalities would say that this is, the value of Phase Two alone is to get this data, because we capture like 30 attributes on every fixture location, as to where it's located, what type it is, what the pole condition is, what the arm condition is, all this information that's valuable to you going forward, even if you didn't do the project. Of course, we take all that information, and my firm uses that for design. So we take all your additional inputs into exactly meeting all of your requirements and applying our standard approach that we've used over and over for over 60 municipalities. That has worked very well. But we'll come back with the design, and we'll get all the little details figured out, so we can then come back to you for a construction-ready project. We've already done all the procurement. We handle all the rebates for you. We actually will go and reserve funds for you during the second phase of the program. And then if you move on to construction, we actually submit all the applications on your behalf with the data that we have and get you those rebate dollars. I should have mentioned on the cash flows, the rebate dollars basically are paid to you in a check in about 30 to 60 days after construction is complete. So let's say if you were to do one of the control options, you get a check for approximately $44,000. So that's a nice offset to the first year of, of the expenses, or if you, if it's a capital expenditure, you just apply that against that. So, and then the final project proposal is what you decide, use to decide whether you want to go on to construction. We can go on to the next slide. This is just a representation of the GIS audit. I mean, it's a nice, we have all these pretty maps that you can access and see everything. You can see real-time installation as it goes on during the construction period. There's all sorts of things, but the key thing is the data that's behind all this. This can be exported out and imported into any of your own GIS systems that you may have. So we do that consistently for municipalities. But again, very powerful set of data that you get out of Phase Two, the design phase. We can go on to the, should be the last slide. So of course, I'm available to answer any questions on what I presented here with the feasibility study. The action before you would be whether you want to move on to the second phase of the project, which is the design or project development phase. That resolution would have a professional services agreement attached to it, which is with Keystone Lighting Solutions. For the feasibility phase, we work directly for DVRPC. They paid us to do the feasibilities, but as it should be from Phase Two, Three, and Four, we would be working directly for you. And so there's an agreement associated with that. Here is the amount that would be paid for Phase Two. It's $8,165. I have it forecasted, but it will be very, very close to that. It is, all of our rates are based on unit prices, so if we find more, a few more fixtures, which I don't think we will, given what Tom gave us, I think we've already identified that there are more, a few more, a few less, we would adjust this number ever so slightly for the actual quantities that we find during the audit. This includes not only our fees, but also DVRPC does have some. some fees for running the entire program. We actually do the billing for them, because they don't have a good mechanism to do that. So it's a pass-through for for my firm to do that on their behalf. But that is the total amount that you'd be looking at for Phase Two, for all the services that I mentioned on the previous slides. We would kick off Phase Two in January. First step is I would be bringing in our auditors to do the GIS-based audit. We'd continue through all the rest of Phase Two, and then in March through May, we'd be coming back to have a new final design proposal in front of you that you could decide upon whether you want to do the project or not, actually move to construction. Okay? So that's what I had for you. I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. How how did you come to be DVR PC's chosen? Or were there other people that are in this? I mean, you know, are you the only one that we go to? It's like...
No, there's, first of all, a little history is that we were at, we were searched out and found to be a technical advisor to the first round of the program. So we worked for DVR PC, and we had a different model where we were using an energy service company to do Round One, and we were the ones to make sure, we'd help them develop the RFP. We made sure that the ESCO was actually doing what they were supposed to do. And we were actually hired by 15 of the municipalities to be their owner's agent, to make sure that what was promised by the ESCO was actually delivered by the ESCO. Then going into Round Two, they saw that there was a better model, which was to hire a design firm to run everything, a specialty design firm. I only do lighting. That's all that I do. And we competed against others nationally, and we just have a very good track record, both regionally, but also in this particular area, that we were selected by DVR PC.
And you were saying earlier, there were like 60 municipalities that you, your company, Keystone, particularly, that your company did?
No, we, Round Two, we've been responsible for all of Round Two. So those 26 have been 100% our responsibility to design and bring through construction.
Okay.
For the 35 in Round One, we were a technical advisor to DVR PC for all 35 of those. But 15 of them hired us directly to also be an owner's agent.
And the other, the other 15 went somewhere else?
They didn't have an owner's agent. They they didn't have an owner's agent. If there was an owner's agent, we were the owner's agent.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Yep. So our our personal direct involvement has been probably around 40 municipalities where we've been providing services directly.
Now, you say Phase Three is March through May. When, so what, and you might have shown it on the timeframe, what's the end date if we move forward continuously?
Yeah. March through May would be the approval, the kickoff to Phase Three. And we'd look to be doing installation through the summer and fall, maybe to the end of the year. But we we look to complete in 2022 all the projects that are in this round.
Okay, the residential lighting, are those mostly in areas that are controlled by HOAs?
Mostly, yes. Yep. I'll have Tom back me up on that. It's mostly HOAs.
Anything that is HOA-related is a development. We'll be staying in our local neighborhoods that we maintain the roads. And I'll give you an example. Across the street here, we don't, we don't do anything in there, so we wouldn't be doing anything.
Like Rivercrest, what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
We wouldn't be doing anything. So...
Are you okay with this? Are you okay with this?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Locally, I can tell you, Collegeville and Trap.
Yeah, Trap, Collegeville, Phoenixville, Schwenksville, Tridifern, Limerick, Malvern are all, have done, have done this, or some are, like Limerick just kicked off construction. So Malvern has not started yet.
With your, with your company?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. All of those, even if they were in Round One, like Schwenksville was in Round One, but I was an owner's agent to them.
Okay.
But most of these were in Round Two, where I'm working directly with them, yes.
So what do you think, manual or go with the other one, or?
Manual.
Manual?
Yeah.
You don't think we'll need the...
We'd be great to have all that information. There are fingertips, you know, when a light goes out. We rely on the police, and they do a great job for us, just, you know, checking lights at night. So we do have a good handle on when we have bulbs go out. It's very important to get it fixed as soon as we can.
Yeah. What's, what's...
It's just as much about safety as it is anything for lighting. And as an example, I might set a T S P for our crossing out front here. When you leave tonight, look at the bulbs on either side of it. You'll see that one side's incandescent and the other side is a regular LED. So you get a really good idea of how this looks, old versus new.
Yeah. What's, what's the fee involved for, you know, if we, if we don't go, what's the other one, not the manual, but the...
It was cloud control, right?
Yeah, the cloud control.
The network control.
Is there, is there an ongoing fee involved in that?
I have it baked in. I have any fees that are associated that for 20 years baked into the price that I showed you.
Okay, so there is a yearly fee involved in that?
You can actually pay it upfront, and we...
Okay, but there is a fee involved in that?
There is. There is. But I've got it included in our costs.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, yeah.
Yep.
Has anybody locally done that?
The network controls?
Yeah.
Limerick is installing it right now.
Are they?
Tridifern installed it. Tridifern has about 2,000 network-controlled lights.
Tom, what, you might want to talk to both of them and see what...
I'll actually be with Bill Bradford.
Think about that.
Yeah, Trap, Trap also did their Cobra heads. They didn't do their decorative. They did their Cobra heads with network controls.
Well, that was something I, so can you do both, manual and other? So the ones that are are critical to us, maybe we want to have better control over it, the ones in in critical roads?
Some of the intersections, intersections, traffic signals.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, places where we have a permit, we're holding a permit for, you know, the traffic signals. Might want to do that.
Yeah.
As a starting point, and they can be added, I assume, later at any time.
Yeah, they can be added. It's just cheaper to do it upfront, because, so you don't have to go back to the fixture.
No, I get it.
Yeah. I mean, the most I've ever seen anybody is, is some municipalities will just do the Cobra heads. Like, I've never seen anybody not do all the Cobra heads for the network controls. They'll at least do all the Cobra heads, but they may not do the residential lights with the network controls.
So, and I want to reiterate this, because I want to make sure I got this right. Tom, for you, and it was back to Laurie's question, if they're in an HOA, we don't own that streetlight, right?
No.
We're still going to upgrade them, or we're not going to upgrade?
No, we won't be touching it. House developments, an example, we won't be going in there doing anything. I believe house might be LED in there. But a lot of these development sites, the houses in this example, we won't be, we won't be going in there doing anything. We don't even show those on our GIS map. We don't show those.
So all the ones that look decorative are ones that we owned?
You own and maintain them.
248 or something.
Yep. And I apologize, I misspoke. And a lot of municipalities, HOAs, are owned and maintained by the township, let's say, and then they charge them back through a lighting district or, so the fact that they're separate, and you guys don't maintain the HOAs, I misspoke there, that we would not be upgrading those. Just the one...
I got you.
Whatever's owned and maintained by the township.
Township.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I think we should keep moving forward on it.
Any other questions?
I agree.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion, adopting Resolution 2021-57, authorizing the execution of the regional streetlight procurement program, Phase Two, administered by Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-57, authorizing the execution of the regional streetlight procurement program, Phase Two agreement administered by Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. All right. And next on the agenda is to consider adopting Resolution 2021-58, extending the emergency declaration for Tropical Depression IDA through the end of the first quarter of 2022 until April 19, 2022. Do we need to do this? What's, what's the purpose of extending this?
We're still receiving invoices in for IDA-related expenses, and Tom has not completed all the work. For example, there's some guardrail along our Cola Road that has not yet been repaired. In an abundance of caution, we want to make sure that those expenses we incur remain eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So we have this before you to extend the declaration beyond the first quarter to the board's first meeting after the first quarter of the year.
Okay. All right. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-58, extending the emergency declaration for Tropical Depression IDA through the end of the first quarter of 2022 until April 19, 2022.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-58, extending the emergency declaration for Tropical Depression IDA through the end of the first quarter of 2022 until April 19, 2022. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Consider awarding a bid for the Taylor Farm demolition project to Brightfields, Inc. of Wilmington, Delaware, in the amount of $92,030 as the lowest responsible bidder. Any questions or comments?
I do. I want to know, you know, the, our signage property got knocked down for a lot less, so I'm curious as to why this is so much more.
I think it's more because of the way the house was constructed and the other amenities on the property that we've asked them to take care of while we're there. For example, there's some septic tanks that are rather deep that need to be, punch a hole in the bottom and then filled with stone. What's in it needs to be pumped out. The electric service, we've included removal of the electric service in the bid. And the house at our signage, I think, was just a frame house. This house is much more substantially constructed, and I don't know, maybe perhaps three or four times the size also. So it's quite a bit more disposal fees to get rid of those materials.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, because it's mostly built out of stone, isn't it?
Thick. It is very, yeah. But it's rather substantial compared to the frame house that was being demoed at our signage.
And a lot more details of things that have to happen.
Correct.
Thank you.
I got a comment. My, my significant other said to me, you know, she's not real happy that we're tearing down structures that are old like this, because we do not have a historical society or any of this such. So she recommended that we make some kind of digital record of these properties, go in and take pictures of rooms and whatnot, and the building and the surrounding, whatever, for the house and the barn and whatever else we're intending to tear down. For, who knows, for future reference for, I have no idea. It was Gail's recommendation, which I thought was a good idea. I have to say that in case she looks at this meeting.
So we can hang the photos on a Joyce property when we finally get ahold of it?
Well, I, I would be happy with it staying in the computer, Al. But she thought it was a good idea to make a record of this, and I think it's a good idea also. It doesn't, it's, you know, it's going to take an hour, somebody's time, to go out there and take some pictures. And, and we have, we have some, you know, some record of the building being there, some, you know, record of what's going on in the township that is no longer here. I don't know. And I, and I, I think that Laurie ought to make the...
She's not going to make this record.
She ought to make the motion to take the house down.
Are we, are we going to take anything or get anything from the barn or anything?
Yeah, there have been things that have been pulled out.
All right.
Right.
Yeah, some folks from the Trap Historic Society went through and requested certain things, and we've delivered those to, to them.
The Trap, so?
Correct.
Not the Upper Province Historical Society?
No, no, no. To clarify...
If it existed, you could start it tonight.
No, no, no. There's a very long name for the Trap Historical Society, and Trap Historical Society is the very short truncated version of their whole name, because they are actually a historical society for Trap, Collegeville, and Lower Proven, Lower Perkyomen Valley. But it's kind of a mouthful. So it really does include this township. We don't have a separate historical society for this township, because it's included in the so-called Trap Historical Society. Just to make that clear for everybody.
So I, I still think we should take pictures to digitally, you know, keep these things. Because, you know, we, we look at the streets in our township here. You know, you go, what, I'm just off the top of my head, Elm Street, you know? There aren't no Elm Trees on that street any longer. It's like, you know, maybe it would be an idea that somebody would look at these things and say, oh, well, that's why they named it this, you know? That's why Anderson Farm Park was named this, you know?
I, I totally agree, and I know that I've asked Brian more than once to take pictures of the house.
We have quite a few. I'll make sure we take extra before it goes.
Okay. It would also be interesting to watch the demolition and try to get pictures of the Beehive Oven, or, you know, whatever we can see as it's torn down. I mean, it's got a laid stone floor in the basement. Now, tell me how many people of that timeframe took those humongous stones downstairs to lay a floor? Because I can tell you, my house doesn't have it. So if you want me to make the motion, I will.
And we're also considering, we're also considering that taking down the chapel down there in Port. You know, it's like, we need to take pictures of that, you know? It's like, if we're going to remove that, you know, I, I just, I think it's a good idea just to, you know, categorize these things, whatever.
I totally agree.
And it'll, it'll make Gail very happy.
Whoa, and a chapel, we're not there yet.
Ooh.
I'm not sure that's coming down.
Okay, I'll make the motion to consider awarding the bid for the Taylor Farm demolition project to Wilmington, Delaware-based Brightfields, Inc. in the amount of $92,030, being the lowest responsible bidder within budgetary limitations.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to award a bid to, for the Taylor Farm demolition project to Wilmington, Delaware-based Brightfields, Inc. in the amount of $92,030, being the lowest responsible bidder within budgetary limitations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. On to new business. Consider adopting Resolution 2021-59, appointing an agent for execution of documents related to the reimbursement of costs pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA. Does somebody want to speak to that?
This is a prescribed FEMA resolution, which we didn't modify too much, but it does designate Richard Livergood as our finance director as the agent for this particular task. It's, I don't think we made any changes to the, the body of it. We pretty much stayed with the boilerplate.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-59, appointing Finance Director Richard Livergood as the agent for execution of documents related to the reimbursement of costs pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-59, appointing Finance Director Richard Livergood as the agent for execution of documents related to the reimbursement of costs pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Consider adopting Resolution 2021-60, appointing an agent for execution of documents related to FEMA's Hazardous Mitigation Program pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA. And I think this is the same sort of thing, different program, but we're going to appoint, we're going to make Brian Borcheck the agent in this case. So if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want another job, Brian?
It's already...
It's what he's been doing.
I'll make a motion, adopting Resolution 2021-60, appointing Assistant Township Manager Brian Bornecheck as the agent for execution of documents related to FEMA's Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA.
Sorry about that. I'll second that motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-60, appointing Assistant Township Manager Brian Borcheck as the agent for execution of documents related to FEMA's Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program pertaining to Tropical Depression IDA. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving an intermunicipal agreement for sanitary sewer collection and conveyance with Perkyomen Township. And I'll let our township solicitor explain.
This was tabled last month because we wanted to make sure we were comfortable with the way the agreement was set up. What I distributed tonight, on the, the top is the final version with my final edits. Other than, the other party might not be Perkyomen Township, it might turn out to be their municipal authority. So I might substitute their, that name into the, to the agreement, and I'll figure that out. figure that out, that part out tomorrow. But otherwise, it, we have it in the form that we want it. Essentially, just reverses the billing from what the other version that was distributed to you, it's the same agreement for the most part otherwise. So this is an agreement that will allow two homes in Perkioman Township to connect their laterals to the Upper Providence conveyance system. The developer in Perkioman Township got approval for their plan, subject to getting this approval from Upper Providence, and they'll use an easement on the Sturley tract that was already laid out and, to make the connection. And then, Perkioman will build the people as in the regular course, and Upper Providence will recover the portion of that that relates to conveyance costs. You know, all your sewer charges have the different components. Here, you're only having stuff go to the plant that was going to go to the same plant either way, and they're just using the conveyance system for, for the township. So, you know, we're comfortable this is in the right shape now.
Okay.
So, the, there, it's the original Sturley home that's being subdivided, that property?
Oxford Lee, yeah, the, the...
No, I don't mean the development that's here, I mean the two other homes that are hooking in on the Perkioman Township side, is apparently the original Sturley home that's being subdivided into two lots?
I know it's a lot being divided into two lots, I did not know the part about it being the original Sturley home, that I don't know.
Well, I just looked up the address of 401 Wortman Road, and that appears to be the original Sturley House.
That, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I have, I want to do Lori's job. Page three, paragraph 11, first sentence, there's some words missing, you might want to take a look.
Okay.
Lori's slacking right now, it's the end of the year. All right, that's all. Paragraph 11.
Okay. All right. This is not, this is not abnormal, all around the border, based on geography, we send some of ours to them, and they send some of theirs to us, and we just have to make legal agreements around it, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve an intermunicipal agreement for sanitary sewer collection and conveyance with Perkioman Township.
Second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt an agreement for sanitary sewer collection and conveyance with Perkioman Township. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. All right, consider adopting Resolution 2021-61 outlining the 2022 municipal minimum obligation for the police, fire, and non-union pension plans.
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual resolution that the board is required to do every year under Acts 205, based on the fiscal stability of the, of our funds. Our actuary calculates what's considered the minimum municipal obligation, and you have for police, fire, and non-uniform separate amounts, please, about 746, 543, fire, 62, 643, and non-uniform, 369, 77. This is already in the now-approved 2022 budget, we just need to execute.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion adopting Resolution 2021-61, confirming the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the police, fire, and non-uniform pension plans.
Second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-61, confirming the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the police, fire, and non-uniform pension plans. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Consider authorizing the solicitor to effect the purchase of 929 Port Providence Road.
So 929 Port Providence is a property that suffered IDA damage, but which also was in bad shape even prior to that. The couple that had lived there had divorced and both kind of walked away from it. It became quickly overgrown by vegetation, and you'd really even have to look at this point to see that there was a house there. The home could not participate in the buyout program because there was nobody using it as their full-time permanent residence at the time of the flood. The property became aware, we became aware of the property because it was on the tax sale list, and the county contacted the township in connection with that to see whether there were any building code violations on the property, which is a new twist in the tax sale law, that they have to check with each local township before it goes on the tax list. When it occurred to us, we saw, Brian and I talked about it a number of times, as being a possible opportunity to acquire a property that could be turned into open space, it's right in a row with other properties that are in the program, and so it made some sense if the numbers worked. So, we had to get an appraisal under the Second Class Township Code, the appraisal came back at $125,000 as the value of the property, and I've negotiated a deal with the owner, the husband of the former relationship owns it out right now, and he was willing to take 90, and then, because we would have to incur the costs to tear it down, and then he would pay off, the liens would have to be paid off with the county, which are just under $10,000. So, you'd be getting it for less than what its stated value is, you know, who's to really say what its stated value is? The, you know, you, we can share the appraisal with you, it does not attempt to sort out the whole business of what would have to be spent to elevate a home on that property if you were to build one under the ordinance, it certainly has suffered substantial damage, and so it would, you know, the first dollar spent would have to include having an elevated home there. Maybe it's not quite worth the full 125 in the appraisal, but we are bound by the appraisal, and I think the price that we negotiated fairly accounts for that. So, the owner is agreeable to what I just laid out, but I made it clear to him that it didn't mean anything until it was brought to the board for approval.
So we're going to pay him $90,000 for the property, and then we have to pay, do we then have to pay the taxes off?
Well, it comes out of the...
Oh, it's going to come out of his 90? Okay. And, but we will have to pay the demolition costs?
Right.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? I think this is a good sale, and like the solicitor was pointing out, a bunch of those homes down there are already in the mitigation program and more than likely going to stick with it, so, you know, hopefully we get enough contiguous space to make a nice park in that area.
Do we need a motion?
What kind of motion do we need, Joe?
Just a motion to authorize me to conclude the transaction with the homeowner.
All right, I'll make that motion to authorize the solicitor to conclude the transaction with the homeowner of 929 Port Providence Road. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to authorize the solicitor to effect the purchase of 929 Port Providence Road. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, thank you. Okay. And now on to manager and department head reports.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is just parliamentary action, I'm asking for the board's affirmation under the administrative code to, to make official the removal of the former Emergency Management Coordinator.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I'm making a motion to affirm the township manager's termination of our former Emergency Operations Coordinator or EOC Director. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to affirm the township manager's termination of our former EOC Director. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that carries. All right. And, was someone going to review the board and commission vacancies, or?
Yes, I just wanted to, there's no pressure on the board, but, you know, typically, this is one item we do at the reorg meeting, but we do, these are the current status of where we stand with the expiring terms. Am I correct, Cheryl, that the people who have said no are not interested in service? So anybody up there with a no? So we have two vacancies on the Human Relations Commission. Sue Lipinski's here, so thank you for agreeing. Municipal Authority, we have one vacancy, that brings us down to four, so that's going, that authority is going to have some more responsibility next year, so it's important that we try to find a qualified person to fill that, it's a five-year, five-year term. Matt Caffrey has declined his appointment to the planning commission, so we have a vacancy there. Tom Wright has agreed to stay on, Paul Newland has agreed to stay on, Jim White has agreed to stay on. Zoning Hearing Board and the Park and Recreation Board and the UC Board Appeals all have current vacancies for which we're looking for people.
My, my understanding was that all of those boards have enough members to form
That's correct.
Form a quorum and function. Okay, but we will look for, in the new year, we will look for new members for those boards. Thank you, Tim. Okay.
One last item, just a reminder, our reorganization meeting for January 3rd.
Okay. All right. And right now, that reorganization meeting on January 3rd is, it's looking like we're only going to schedule a reorganization meeting, and our regular business meeting will be held on the third Monday, as always. We don't have much in the way of business with land development or anything else that's, that's clock-driven, so we should be okay with that. All right, consultants' reports.
Casey has one.
Do you have anything, Jen?
No, nothing at this time.
All right, I did have something to follow up on with the board from something we discussed back on December 1st. The board had authorized us to fill out a Greenlight Go project scoping form for the intersection of Doe Run Boulevard and Route 29, which is the intersection with GSK and Quest, just north of the Black Rock Road intersection. That intersection has been in operation with a current span wire design and strain poles rather than a modern-day mast arm design for the last 28 years, since 1993 it's been constructed, so it's, it's ending its useful life. So we filled out the scoping form application to replace all the supports, to reduce the maintenance and improve its structural integrity, as well as add ADA facilities and a connecting sidewalk. I believe at the time we spoke on the first, we taught, we did a real rough estimate of the intersection, and upon doing the scoping form and submitting it on, on December 3rd, we had to include a more detailed cost estimate. The total of the intersection cost, we estimated around $404,000 to replace everything, it's a pretty wide intersection, requires larger supports, new, a new controller cabinet, et cetera. The township match requirement under Greenlight Go is 20%, so doing the math, it's roughly a $100,000 township match for the $400,000 project. We have not heard back yet from PennDOT on the scoping form, we should, probably before the end of the year, but they give you feedback as to the details of the project, that the scope's appropriate, et cetera. Upon hearing so, they'll require a full submittal of an application before the 14th of January, you guys do not meet again, I don't think, until the 18th of January in terms of a regular meeting. So I wanted to discuss the project and if it, and see if there's still the appetite to move forward, and if there is, to allow Tim Teiberman to be the authorizing agent to move the application forward, should we get good word from PennDOT that it should be replaced. So that's really what I wanted to discuss this evening.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that, does anyone else? I have no issue with that, do we need a motion or anything, or?
At this point in time, I think Tim has been authorized to do this in the past with other Greenlight Go applications, so I wanted to fill you in on the details. There'll be a letter that has to be submitted with the formal application, and then we can tie it up after that period of time.
My only comment is we should have, none of us are responsible for that, but this shouldn't have never happened, there should have been a, that we're paying $400,000 to fix something that a board 20-some years ago should have never let happen, that should have been, and it wasn't even GSK, what was it, Kodak?
Kodak, yeah.
Yeah, Kodak and Quest should have paid for that when they put their driveway in, but I digress.
So, so do you guys know exactly where this is?
Right in front of GSK.
Where?
When you come out of Glaxo, that light.
Yeah, it's where you go into the main driveway, GSK, and on the upside is Quest.
Yeah.
It's right there where the 422, where you get all, you know, the ramp comes down, just past there.
I, didn't, wasn't, GSK, didn't they redo all the, the lighting down there? Did we miss that? No, so they did, they did not replace all of the structure, right? What they did, what they... Okay, so you're talking the structure, not the lighting itself? Yeah, this is the structure, so this is... They've already paid for the permit for the, for the light and everything. Yeah, yeah, so the, the supports, rather than the having the arms out? Yeah. It's the span wire, the stuff that you wanted to get rid of at Green Tree and, and Upper Indian Head Road, yeah. So it's been that way, that intersection's designed that way, there's no problem with it, there's intersections, that, wide intersections that are designed like that, but new structures at that location to support and sustain the maintenance and the wind loads, et cetera, are more proper. So through this grant program, the township can replace it, but there is a 20% match for it, so. I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think it's worth it to replace it, it's 20 years old anyway, right?
If I was on the board, I wouldn't replace it unless we got the grant.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Unless we got the grant, I wouldn't spend a nickel on that, right?
That's right.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
But if the grant comes, you have to move it forward by January 3rd.
Right, if you don't get the grant, then you, we know about the issue, and next time somebody goes in there and wants something, maybe we get down to do it.
Casey, I have a quick question, is there any right-of-way acquisition required on that, or is that included in the scope?
I don't know how we missed that.
I don't think.
I don't think there's any right-of-way acquisition, if there's any right-of-way acquisition, Tim, it would be to connect the sidewalk, but it would be on the property, I think, of Quest on, on the one side? Of course, they put a, they put a light on, on Black... I don't know if Anthony mentioned that to you, or are you just thinking of that now?
He may have, and it went...
I don't believe there is something extraordinary like that.
Solicitor report?
Nothing additional.
Okay. And now we're at supervisor's comments.
I just want to make a comment that when I first came on as a supervisor, the first big problem that we faced was fire, and that was kind of a critical point, and I just want to give a big shout out to Al, because it was him and I that formed a sort of a small subcommittee, and we spent, what, 18 months initially when I first came on, and we went down to Black Rock, and we found out as much information as we could, and we went over and we thought, oh, let's try to cobble together a volunteer model, because I think we need more help, and we went over to Trap, and how many Thursday night meetings we were there? You know, month after month, week after week, and we realized at the end of that, that that wasn't going to be the full story, and then we, it was the hybrid story, and just all that evolution, I have to say, thank you, Al, for being such a good partner, and always bringing your A-game, always being passionate about the subject, and, anyway, just happy to have worked with you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure with everybody, even you, John.
Thank you, Al. I, I have, I have a couple of comments, actually, I, you know, this being the last meeting of the year, I started earlier today, started reflecting on what's been, you know, what we've gone, some of the things that we've gone through, and some of the people that I'd, I'd like to thank. So I wrote these down. I'd like to thank Tim Teiberman for his dedication to managing this township and the people who work here. I come into this building either early or late at night to find Tim sitting at his desk, plugging away on Township Is, I would say to him, don't you ever go home? And along with Tim, I'd like to thank Richard Livergood, Richard truly has a grip on the financial stability of our township. I've had many conversations with Richard, and in a lot of those conversations, he would interject, as a resident of this township, which shows me he is thinking not only as our finance guy, but his thoughts are also on how this affects all township residents when it comes to their wallets. I'd also like to thank both of them for their great job, the great job they did on the budget this year. I'd also like to thank Brian Borcheck for his dedication to the township. Just recently, the School of Canal Association had a cleanup along the canal, on his day off, Brian brought his two boys along to help with the cleanup, this shows what kind of person he is. How many of you would do this for your employer?
How many of you would do this for your employer? This is not the first time and only, this is not the first and only time he has done this. Thank you, Brian, for going beyond what is expected of you. A big thank you to our Parks and Recreation Department, and especially Sue Hoffman and Sarah Sota. Sue was also at the canal cleanup with husband and children in tow, and Sarah can be found not only doing her job at Direct Center, but supporting every other department in some capacity. A huge thank you to Tom Broadbent and his crew. Without Tom and his Public Works crew, Montclair and Port Providence residents would still be digging out from Ida's devastation. You guys are the unsung heroes, in my opinion. You bring me pride when I see you working on streets and setting things up for Community Day, and all the things you guys do. You guys are the wheels that keep this municipality moving. Everyone in this township should give a big thank you to Chief Carrigan. He and his men put themselves in harm's way, saving countless lives along the river during Ida. You guys should have a parade in your honor, but I know that's not what you guys became, firemen. Thank you for the time and effort you put into our new station. I look forward to many years of service coming from that facility. To our relatively new police chief, Mark Freeman, you did an awesome job with the task of keeping everyone safe during the flooding in Montclair. Although you've been an outstanding officer throughout your career in Upper Providence Township, as a newly appointed police chief, you really stepped it up, having to deal with a catastrophe and keeping the rest of the township being able to sleep at night, knowing we are kept safe by a group of fantastic officers. Hiring you was one of the best things I did as a township supervisor this year. You are someone I look up to and admire. To Jeff Grace and Matt Light, you guys are, you guys do a thankless job keeping our residents in check with our adopted ordinances, zoning, and code enforcement. Thank you for keeping us all in check. I've thanked all the department heads here, but these people couldn't do their jobs without the men and women they hired. You are all appreciated beyond words. There is another group I would like to thank. There's a group of volunteers down in Port Providence and Montclair that need to be mentioned. This group is still at it. They are doing something that we, the township, can't do. They are feeding and nurturing our residents while they get back on their feet. I want to thank you for what you have done and continue to do. You are awesome. Also, I'd like to thank you, Al Vagnosi, for your years of service on this board. We have had our differences, and I wish you luck wherever you go. And the rest of the board, we didn't always agree with each other, but we learned to compromise and get things done, something I can say that our elected officials in Washington don't know how to do. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Go ahead.
I just want to ditto all that great stuff that John and Helene both said, because I don't have the foresight and the thought to, like, you know, figure this out ahead of time. So I just want to ditto that. Something else I want to mention for those people who tune in and watch the video later again is about development, and I want people to know that the township as a municipality is very much limited by what the state allows us to do regarding buying open space. First of all, you have to have a willing seller who is willing to sell it to the township for open space for not a penny over appraised value. Let's face it, whenever any of us want to sell something we have, we want to get top dollar for it. And when people want to sell their properties, and a developer comes in and wants to give them two or three times what appraised value is, they're gonna take it. It's happened more than once. John has a story about offering someone a million dollars for their property, and he got laughed at because the developer was gonna pay him two, three times what the appraised value is. So the municipality is in a hard place. We're not allowed to spend a penny over appraised value. So when you, and the next thing is that people seem to think that if there is open land somewhere near them, that that is open space. It is not designated open space. It is simply undeveloped land. And if you want to see that undeveloped land stay undeveloped, then you've got to do something about it. You want to get your neighbors together and buy the property, or you come to the township and let us know long before the developers are in there, like vultures, trying to buy it. This is just something that's important to me. There are two properties that sold to developers right around the corner from me. I hate to see them get developed. It's gonna add 40 houses to my neighborhood. But I didn't have the money to go and buy those properties, you know? And the township wasn't, no one offered it to the township. And so you've got to have willing sellers for the appraised value. Moving on from that, that's kind of depressing, is I have only three books to recommend this month, believe it or not. "The Road to Unfreedom" by Timothy Snyder, "The Ministry of Curiosities" by C.J. Archer, and that's three books in a set, and "Betrayal" by Jonathan Karl. Thank you all, and I hope everybody has great holidays between now and the next time we get together, and good health and all of that. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Lori, you finally wore off on me. I have a book to recommend by Colin Powell. It says, it's called, "It's Worked For Me: A Life in Leadership." Tremendous book for leadership and how to treat people, a quick read. So I've read a lot of leadership and business books. This is a good brief read. Both my boys who are college and law school are getting this for Christmas. They'll never see this meeting, so I can say it, so. Anyway, it's a good book. It's a quick read.
All right, our next meeting will be January 3rd, our state-mandated reorganization meeting, as all municipalities in the state will meet that night to reorganize. And we plan on continuing our third Monday of the month meeting schedule, but we'll have to approve that in January. And other than that, I just want to tell everybody happy holidays. I hope folks get to spend some quality time with friends and family in these holidays. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.